Okay, the City Marine City City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, August 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler is there.
Did you hear him?
Remotely.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
Interim City Manager Ittrich.
Here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment? We're moving 10-F Frank, the City Commission Remote Participation, to follow approval of the agenda.
So moved. Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? This is for Commissioner Kreidler. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler. Commissioner Kreidler?
Is it me?
Yes. It is you.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going to talk a little bit about the City Commission Remote Participation because this is something, one of our city commissioners is on the road for work, and so occasionally he's going to come in like he is now. So Bob, you want to talk about this and how we can allow this?
Well, the remote participation has been going on for years on case-by-case basis. The Open Meetings Act doesn't expressly discuss or define remote participation, but there is case law handed down by the Michigan Court of Appeals in 1985 that supports remote participation in public meetings. The conditions under which you can allow remote participation is that the person participating remotely has to be able to hear you all, and you have to be able to hear him, and the public has to be able to hear him. So if you're going to have a system with remote participation, those conditions have to be met, and every issue that you take up this evening has to be done by a roll call vote so that his vote can be casted. Eventually, you need to adopt this procedure into your rules of meeting procedures, which was also recommended by the Court of Appeals. In Michigan, in 2018, Michigan State Extension, who does a lot of work helping communities guide their way through zoning and other issues, issued a best practices for allowing this. And number one, it's recommended that there be a quorum in place if the person was not participating remotely. In other words, that the balance of you forms a quorum. Second, it is recommended that your rules be amended to allow for the remote participation. It also suggests the idea of every motion being done by roll call, and it certainly suggests that everybody has to be able to hear everybody. If that isn't the case, then the person participating remotely should just, you know, be excused, and you would still have a quorum to conduct business. But I know that this particular commissioner is very diligent and cares about the community and doesn't want to miss the opportunity to be in these meetings. I know his personality rings like that, so here we are, and those are the rules.
Okay. Questions? So I need a motion to allow remote participation.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good. All right, now let's get on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. And there is the podium. Yeah, and I just want to remind everyone, sorry, sorry, Paul. Just want to remind everyone, these mics are not live, so when you're up at the podium, you have to speak up.
They're for recording only.
Yeah, recording only. They'll be live next meeting.
Before you start, so when we get down to the actual discussion of it, you're not going to allow anybody to speak at that time either? They have to do it all here on this topic?
Yes. Who said say yes? Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Paul Gallas, and I operate the tour boat in Marine City on the Bell River. Some things have happened recently. Developments have come my way. A purchaser has approached me and wanted to buy my boat. And he approached me one month into this new venture, and he kind of acted like a horse trader, and I wasn't real interested. I told him I had just started this. I've got a lot of support, community support, support from the City Commission and mayor and everyone else involved, and I want to give it a whirl and make this thing happen. And he left, and he was from Chicago. And then a month later, he came back, and he said, "Paul, I really need your boat, and I am willing to pay you the price that you had it listed for before all this started." And so I had to think long and hard on that, and with my wife, we reached a conclusion that I'm 65 years old, I've got this opportunity to sell my last asset and call myself retired, and that's basically the decision that I've made. So next Saturday, next Friday, we're having a closing on the boat, and the boat, unfortunately, is not going to be sold to a local person, but it's going to go to Chicago. And B, it's going to operate on the Chicago River as an architectural tour boat. I do have another boat on the property, and I'm working on it. I can't operate it like I operated the Clinton Friendship that was under the Coast Guard regulations that I had with that. I am allowed to operate it as a six-passenger boat, and I'd like to consider that option. I'm also talking to other people in the industry, friends that I know, people that I've known through the years, and I'm explaining to them what has happened here in Marine City, what a great environment I think it is for a tour boat, possibly a 50-passenger boat or something like that might fit just so perfectly here. And if anything like that can happen, I will be 100% supportive and give all the effort that I can to make it happen for whoever that person may be. But, and I just want to thank the Commission and the whole city and everything for their great support, and, you know, I mean, everybody's just worked with me wonderfully on this project. I just, I feel like I'm kind of dropping a ball, but at the same time, I just feel like when I'm ready two years from now to retire or something, I may not be able to have the option of finding a buyer. And here he is, and, you know, I've had the long discussion with my wife, and we just feel like this is probably the time and the thing to do. So I just want to thank you all for your great support, and I'll do everything I can to keep a tour boat operation kind of thing in the works on the Bell River if it's at all humanly possible. And that's about all I can tell you. So.
Thank you, Paul.
And I said to quite a group, I wasn't expecting all these people here tonight either.
They're all here for you, Paul.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Judy White. I'm from 8757 Anchor Bay Drive in Clay Township. My purpose in being here tonight is to say thank you very much to Mayor Sheroverkaman, to interim City Manager Mike Ittrich, to Kristen Baxter, City Clerk, for the very, very supportive, productive, constructive meetings that we've had regarding City Hall. It has been wonderful. It has been uplifting and encouraging. It's given me new energy and new level of commitment regarding our work on City Hall. So I thank you very much. It's really been actually kind of fun meeting with you guys, and we are planning more meetings of that ilk for the near future. Friends of City Hall has just embarked on Phase Two of the interior restoration of the building. Phase One involved the fire suppression system, a new water line, and so on. We spent about $300,000 inside the building. Phase Two involves an emphasis on accessibility and the construction of ADA-compliant restrooms, and of course, the installation of an elevator to serve all levels of the building so everyone can get to every level and all the activities that we planned for the interior of the building. Phase Two is going to cost us about $400,000, and so to pay for that, we have started a capital campaign. There are some brochures at the front table regarding that capital campaign, and unfortunately, all I had was the generic brochures with me tonight to pass out. So I will try to correct that somehow, perhaps at the next Commission meeting and so on, so that we can, you know, publicize that effort to everyone. Paul Digman has been very kind to book us on the 26th, so we can do a taping, and of course, I will talk about that effort then. I have devoted about 10 years of my life to the restoration of City Hall, and what I have discovered is there are many, many people within this community who are deeply, intimately committed to that building in a very emotional way. That happens to be true of people on the Commission as well. I have found out that we are friends of the same kind, of the same interests, and they have the best interests of City Hall at heart, so I feel very encouraged about that, and I think we're going to make some tremendous progress. We have discussed things that I cannot discuss with you yet, which are so thrilling, so exciting, and the City embraces that with open arms. So guys, thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Go ahead.
Philip Alukshak, 546 Chartier. First thing I want to talk about is the sale of the old City Hall. I understand there's interest in the Friends of City Hall requiring from the City, or interest in them acquiring from the City. I give the City full support or my support of going forward with that. They care about the history of the building. They know about the history of the building. There's history stipulations attached to the building. Let them have it. It'll take the burden off the City and also preserve the park around it, and we can see the great things they can come up with in the future. I look forward to it. So it comes to Old City Hall. I strongly encourage letting the Friends of City Hall have it. Next thing I want to talk about is the meeting minutes from the 7/15/21 meeting in regards to selling the old City Hall and the Guy Center. There was a debate that was going on between Commissioner Hendrick and Mayor Verkaman. A lot of that debate was completely cut right out of the minutes, and all of Mayor Verkaman's comments were cut out of the minutes as well in that section under the Real Estate Proposal section. I'd wish as a resident that those comments be put back in the minutes so there's a full record of that entire debate between Commissioner Hendrick and Mayor Verkaman. The Guy Center. Bertha Guy left two pieces of property to the City, and those properties were to be sold to fund a community center for the residents of Marine City. The City sold those properties. There was two properties. They sold them. They took the funds. They bought the Guy Center. A fund was also supposed to be set up that would be funded through the rentals and everything else, the use of the Guy Center. Those funds were then supposed to be used to help with the maintenance and repair of the building and to keep it going for the community for a long time. About 16 years ago, the City decided that they want to put their city offices into that building, hence then the public couldn't rent it, they couldn't use it. The City was in there for 16 years, so therefore, no funds went into that maintenance fund either that should have been there. Now, the City gets out of that building and now wants to just sell it from under the feet of the residents. They just want to get rid of it, sell it, although they took it away from the people for 16 years. They now want to sell it. My thinking is this: if it is in disrepair, like Mayor Verkaman stated, the building's in disrepair, she stated at the last meeting, they were in there for 16 years. They put wear and tear on that building. Why shouldn't they have to pay to fix it up? Why shouldn't they have to put the funds forth to fix up what they took away from the community so it can go back to the residents like Bertha Guy wanted it to happen in the first place? So I strongly am against selling the Guy Center. I want the City to find a way to give it back to the people. My understanding is the plans for the Guy Center or the new type of community center is just going to be a meeting room, and if you look outside, they've already moved the plaque outside the City Hall, which is premature, and I'm completely 100% against it. There's a lot of Facebook feedback where people are against it, and the City should strongly, strongly consider not selling that building. Because my other concern is if you sell the building, even though it's the footprint of the building, there's two beautiful parks to the left and to the right. Someone buys the building. If they want the land next, are they going to approach the City and try to buy those parks next, and we lose the parks at the same time? They're beautiful parks, and the center does have potential to be used for the residents. So I strongly suggest finding another option. Do not sell the Guy Center. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Barbara Watson, 540 Scott Street, Marine City, Michigan. I have lived here all my life. I remember when Bertha Guy gave us that Guy Center, and I am not for selling it. Get a recreational department in here. Have that for the kids so they can do whatever we need necessarily. You go down Marine City Street at midnight, got all these skateboarders in the middle of the street because they have no place to go. It's time Marine City steps up. St. Clair has a skateboard park. Algonick has one. Marine City was the first one to request one, and what have we got? A bunch of kids skateboarding on Water Street. Also, I want Edison Park. Put back those diving boards. Get somebody in there to look at them and get the kids participating in swimming again. I'm tired, I mean, what do they have to do? What channels do we go? No, I am very against selling the Guy Center. That was given to the community, not the City, not the City officials, and whoever had the brainstorm of selling it. I don't know who you are, but no, I vote no. Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I missed my spot.
Kathy Murray, 262 South Second Street, Marine City. I don't have much to say. I always have a lot to say, but I don't have much. I agree with the City Hall. Give it to these people, no problem. But what are you afraid of that you won't let Marine City people vote on the Guy Center? If you want to, they want it. What are you afraid of? So I just believe it should be up to the people. Well, I know it is, but they want to sell it, so now you got to vote.
That's not the speculation that they got it for.
I know.
To be sold, they should use the money for a new community center.
Yep.
That's exactly right. I agree with you.
I hate to use my gavel, but I'm going to. We have to make sure that when we're at the podium, that the person at the podium has the floor. There's no other public comment, okay? You've had your chance. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Jenkin.
Keith Jenkin, 809 South Water. First off, I'd like to welcome our new interim City Manager.
Eight more days.
And I never knew that Brian Ross was such a good ventriloquist, too. That's pretty cool. My voice is going, so I'll make it short. This goes back, what, 16 summers ago? I know Mr. Flossin is in on this. This is when we discovered that the building that was falling down actually wasn't, and that just led into about three years of banging heads with everybody until somebody gave up and left town, which would be City Manager, I'm not going to say his name. Anyway, it's 137 years old, that building, and it's such a bad idea to sell it. I mean, even if you could find somebody to use it as it is, or just say like, okay, the outside's going to stay the same, that's no guarantee that there's somebody who'll take care of the building. I don't even know if you could put safeguards in place on a contingency for the listing for something like that. But the long and the short of it is that there's been a lot, I guess the long and the short of it is that Marine City was nothing like it is now 16 summers ago. Nothing. And what that did, you can ask Bill, too, when they tried to pull a fast one on it, it awakened the sleeping giant. And ever since then, the City's been on upward mobile, well, upward movement. Really, that's about all I have to say. But I was doing a little research, though, and I had a laugh, that the building was like two years old when Geronimo surrendered in the Indian Wars. So you're just going to have to think in that process and all the stuff that that building witnessed. And it falls to us. It fell to us 16 summers ago, and it still falls to us. It's something worth keeping, for sure. So. And Judy White, I feel a lot better since you're enthused, because I know if you're enthused, then there's progress there, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkin.
Good evening. Georgia Phelan, 6004 Lozon, Catreville. I am here because of the City Hall issue, and I actually am very happy that this attention to historic City Hall has come about because it has created conversations that maybe needed to happen prior to this. This communication that's been happening has resulted in a shared goal between the Friends of City Hall and the City, I believe, and that is reuse of that City Hall building. There's now an opportunity for a cooperative approach to achieving that goal. I believe challenges like this are innovation, and there's always more than one solution to a challenge like this. So I'm glad these conversations are going on. I believe that innovative public-private approaches can result in a win for everybody. And after the great financial investments, both by the Friends of City Hall, as Judy said, something in the lines of $300,000, and great financial investments by the City as well in that property, I believe working together can both preserve what is a cultural icon, and I think Keith kind of touched on that, that it's the culture of the community in how long it's been here. It can provide the City with even possibly the community space that it will need in Marine City's future. So I congratulate both parties on this. I'm associated with Friends of City Hall and have been in front of this board for years for all kinds of things and issues, and this cooperative approach is what is needed, and hopefully, it results in the Friends of City Hall being allowed to continue their work and their investments in this cultural icon of Marine City.
Thank you, Mrs. Phelan. Go ahead.
I'm Laura Scatia, 430 South Water Street. I've read a lot on Facebook and heard some of the comments tonight about needing somewhere for the teens to go. About five years ago, we embarked on creating a teen center at 300 Broadway. We've invested over $120,000. Much of that was my personal funds. We opened the doors, and there's no kids. We've reached out to the middle schools. We've reached out to the high schools. We work with Riverview East. We work with a lot of organizations, and still, the kids don't come. So I know that a lot of people want the Guy Center or want, you know, for us to have somewhere for the teens. We have somewhere for the teens. We can't get them to come. We've used, we have a lot of smart people on our board. We have the principal from Riverview East, Jason Steyer, is now our president. I'm the treasurer. I don't know what the answer is here, but it's not really that easy. It's very complex. We've tried to do a lot of things, and there's just not a lot of support. So, you know, I know this is really hard for the City. I would like to see, I am for progress in different ways. I do think that the selling of some of the properties that the City owns can bring in revenues for the City, and I believe it can also bring in a tax base, and that is what it's about. We need money to move forward and to be able to work on other projects and do other things. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Scatia. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Kim Turner, 361 North Main Street. I have several objections that I would like to make tonight. Number one, I'm opposed to the sale of 300 Broadway, Old City Hall. Number two, I'm opposed to the sale of 303 South Water Street, the Guy Center. Number three, I'm opposed to the sale of Heritage Square Park, plotted and mapped by St. Clair County in 1836. Fourth, I'm opposed to the rewriting of the master plan, eliminating an entire city park established in 1836, including Old City Hall, and the removal of the Guy Center, Community Center. Five, I am opposed to a city-owned marina. Six, I'm opposed to calling 260 South Parker City Hall. This building houses city offices. I don't believe this is a City Hall. Seven, I'm opposed to any portion of 260 South Parker being used as the Guy Community Center. I want to know why the City needs to sell any of these properties. Isn't it true the City received $400,000 in COVID cash from the state of Michigan? Where did that money go? I believe that amount of cash could be used to bring the Guy Center up to ADA compliance. If you don't fix the Guy Center, in my opinion, you should razz that building and create it into a continuous, one-flowing park. That way, the community can still enjoy it, and the kids can have a place to play. Also, I want to know what makes a park a park? Supposedly, the park that is 300 Broadway is somehow not a park. Even though when you do a simple tax parcel search using the St. Clair County website, it shows plainly as day that it is a park. Park. So if someone could explain to me what makes a park a park, I would like to know that. Also, if this board is willing to sell the old established, the old Also, if this board is willing to sell the oldest established park in this town, what park are they going to sell next? One of the safeguards against that. And also, has there been any thought about combining Old City Hall and the Guy Center in the city hall? The hall is plenty big enough, and it would probably meet the state requirements for a community center, once it's brought up to code. I think the Guy City Hall Community Center has a nice ring to it. The city owns various other vacant lands in surrounding townships and in town. Why don't we look at selling those parcels before we start looking at selling our community center, a historic landmark, and the oldest established park in the town? Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Rosalie Squires, 211 Michigan. I've lived here 27 years, and I've seen things come and go. But I will say this: whether the Guy Center gets sold, or whether the Guy Center gets kept, it is not ADA accessible, and that's a civil rights violation. I happen to have a disability status, because I have lupus. And lupus has activity and rust. And when it is very active, I need things like ramps and parking places and such. Tonight happens to be a very good day, so I'm parked way in the back of the parking lot, but there's time that I can hardly get out of my car. And I've been dealing with this since my late 20s. So this is a civil rights violation. I have complained... You can only make a civil rights violation about ADA if you happen to have a disability status. You can't do it just as a private citizen. And I have made complaints with the Civil Rights Division, with the Department of Justice, and each time, everything got corrected. I never complained about the Guy Center, because I was waiting for the improvements to be made. And I'm against the Guy Center being sold, not because I've got some kind of settlemental attachment to it regarding the guys. I'm against it being sold, because number one, we have a lack of parking downtown, and that would take up parking that we have. Second, we only have one building that we own in a city that's got the name Marine in it. We only own one building on the water, and that's the building. And we're going to get rid of that building now, too? Another thing, it has a lot of historical value that people... Nobody has mentioned this. It has the historical value is that it was an old Edison building. It was the changing station, and it used to have a business. You could pay your bills there. There used to be a time when DTE was called Edison, and you could go change your light bulbs for free. If you had your old light bulbs, they'd just give you a new one for free. And that was one of the places it was done. It wasn't really all that long ago, because it was done in my lifetime. I can remember going to the Edison building. And, you know, this is a place where a county where Thomas Edison lived. So that's an old Edison building, right? And Thomas Edison's father was a light keeper for Scratch It. And what do we have right next to the Guy Center? A lighthouse. And really, we could get a historical marker for this, combine the two things, that the history of the lighthouse and the Guy Center combined. So my big pet peeve is, I know that kids don't participate in that stuff. My husband was a teacher for 36 years, and we've been involved in lots of church activities. It's hard to get kids to do things. But my big complaint with it is that you're getting rid of a historical building that has history of the entire county, not just this city. Second, though, whether we keep it or whether we sell it, it's not ADA accessible. We don't have the bathrooms. We don't have entrance in. It is not ADA accessible. And whatever we do with that building, that needs to be corrected. I'm for keeping it. That's my opinion. But my big pet peeve with that is it's not ADA accessible.
Thank you, Mrs. Squires. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioner. It's been a while since I've been here. It's nice to be back. Beautiful place, like the digs. Real nice here. So, yeah, I'm here to talk about the Guy Center. And I guess I'll start with... I'm just going to pass out this poll that I did on Facebook. Pass it down, take one. Now, I did ask anybody that responded to this poll that they'd be a Marine City resident, just the commissioners, not... Goes that way. That way. There you go. There's only seven of them. Just passing mine down. Thanks. All right. So, yeah, anyways, I did put on the poll for only people of Marine City to respond to that poll. And as you guys can see, the results are pretty damn overwhelming. 92%... 92% of the people that responded to the poll said we absolutely should not sell the Guy Center. And it's a little concerning to me that, you know, that percentage was so high, because our mayor, in the last meeting, says she's out in the community, and she's talking to people. I have not met one person in this community that's actually been here and knows our history to say that it's a good idea. Not one. So who are you talking to? Because it's not the long-term residents, and that's who it should be. Not your rich buddies, not the people that stop in at a little bar. It should be the people that know our history, the people that live here. Okay? And it sure shouldn't be whoever the prospective buyer is, which I'm kind of thinking you know who that's going to be. So another thing the mayor said in the last meeting was that she has every right to sell that building. You know, I got the resolution here from, you know, when this was all established, that it should be the community center, and, you know, this was in response to birth a guy's will. This was the resolution that the city came up with. The city of Marine City, further covenants to establish, and by this resolution does establish in its books and records of account a Guy Community Center Fund, which fund shall consist of the real property hitherto described, funds from the sale thereof, any other real property purchased with said funds, the rental proceeds of any real property purchased by said fund, and any investment earnings of said fund. It is expressed intention of the city of Marine City that upon acceptance of said gift and at all times after, there shall be maintained and by necessary periods caused by sale, repurchase, construction, reconstruction, or renovation, blah, 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 blah. So you can see, it's pretty clear what the intention of the city was at that time. And you have no right to come here, especially not even being from here, to come here and sit in that seat and say, "You have every right to do something that is perfectly established" that you don't. Okay? Now, it's super important to respect and know our history. I mean, that's what makes this town great, right? All the buildings are still standing. That's why people come here, because they like to see all the very old buildings. And you're just going to tear that down? It's a terrible idea. It's like, you think you know what's best for us, like we're children or something. But believe it or not, like, there's a lot of very intelligent people in this town, and we do know what we want, and we do know what's good for the city. So you should respect that. I know, like, every time a house in the past has come up for sale, the city has bought that house that's along the river there, and they've knocked it down. And I'm not real familiar, because it's kind of before my time, but I've been told that the whole idea was every time there's a property available, that it would be purchased and that it would be knocked down so we could have a continuous park in the front, as large a park as we can. Okay? So that kind of goes against that whole idea, the whole idea of purchasing these properties and turning them into parks. Okay? Because I can highly doubt, I really, really doubt, that whoever purchases this, they're going to throw up condos, just like they have across the street. You know that's what they're going to do. All right? So let me remind you that you represent us. If you cannot respect our wishes, it's time for some new reps that will. It's simple as that. I mean, look what happened to the last guy that was sitting in that seat and thought he knew it was best with the big head. Got voted out, two to one. Nobody's ever seen him since, heard from him. Political career, gone. So I sincerely hope that you guys make the right decision up here, because it is the right decision. Thanks.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Whoa, hang on. Sorry. He's going.
203 Pleasant, 215 Harrell. You know, the Guy Center, worst count the worst, rip it down, make it a park, give the Guy people their little sign up front. To sell it makes no sense to me. 300 Broadway, well, that's another story. Since the Lepley administration was around, we took money out of Tifa. We had our Tifa professionals come in, go, "Yeah, that was illegal to do that." But yet, the woman who was our treasurer for umpteen years, you know, nothing ever happened to anybody. You know, when it was deemed illegal, she's collecting a pension. How much of that $500,000 to $750,000 that was taken for that building, minus whatever had to give back when Tifa was dissolved? Now, there's a lot of money that the city's missing out on, you know, that was stolen from the people, basically. Yeah, this is just, you know, Keith Jenkin wants to talk about, "Look how big downtown's going." Yeah, big downtown's going. 2018, I'd been complaining about a house. Still, three years later, we still got issues with that house. You know, you want people to put money into it. "I got a house next door. I don't want to put money into it. I'm piecing it together. Why should I put money into it? We got a problem house." You know, Jim's been looking into it. You know, Mike's looking into it. You know, but 2000, we're talking three years. Three years, and we can't... You know, I'm paying taxes for a house that, basically, I'm looking possibly, you know, the old-time retirement home, you know? But, you know, how can I sell a house when we got issues? You know, the illegal rental problem? You know? City takes the house, you know, gets the money out of them. I'm talking to the Guy Center. A lot of people brought up the teens. Well, they forget, the Guy Center used to have, you know, quote-unquote, because I'm getting there, too, with the gray, old people used to go there and play cards, play, you know, euchre, whatever. That was one of their smiting spots, where they got to go. They're shoved into school, Washington Life Center, you know? So what? So instead of Marine City getting any money, they're dealing with that. You know, they're going to the school system, which school system, to me, has got some issues that they've buried under the carpet a few times. You know, it's just amazing. You want to come in, you're talking about the boat deal, using DNR money. Now, you're using DNR money. That's money I'm paying to the DNR for my hunting license, fishing license. So that's my understanding, you want these boat wells that are down there. So if you're using my money, how can the city rent these boat wells out? If we're getting money from the DNR. You know, that shouldn't be, you know, DNR money to buy a piece of property so the city can make money, when it's coming out of sportsmen's pockets? You know? That makes no sense at all. You know, and you want the kayak rental. Have you ever talked to any of the people over by the kayak, wherever you want to put it, the Small Sticks and all the others who live over there? You know, "We got any parking for all these people?" You ever seen Springborne when they do it? You know, they're lined up down South Bell River Road when it's a busy day. You know? Like I say, you guys are bringing in, you're doing things, you know? It's great you want to do things, you know, but the 300 Broadway deal, like I say, it cost taxpayers $20,000 to pay that little cement, if my memory serves me right. You rented the building out, but then we're paying to probably cut the grass, I imagine, if it's a park, and 20 grand to blacktop that pavement. That come out of our money. You know? They should have got, you know, back when Tifa was around, instead of grants for the people, we were writing grants for 300 Broadway people. You know? Like I say, public sidewalk, public sidewalk. You know, back in the day, we had a little drug problem. Your establishment was across the street. You had the secretary or treasurer who was on the other side of it. No one opened their mouth. I'm a half mile away. So it's funny how I get information, crackdown, and, you know, and I blew it up on the meeting the one day. Before the next meeting, issue was solved. I don't think there was an ARCAN back then. Bring them back. But, you know, it's like, you know, downtown, you want to grow, grow, grow. Let's take care of the neighborhood some. These problem-issue properties that, you know, they come in, they clean up, people disappear for a couple of weeks or whatever, all of a sudden, they're back. If it's deemed non-livable, what the hell are we doing in there? You know? Red tag it? Police save it off? Well, it was red tagged for a second. Now, nobody called me, told me, "Yeah, there's a bunch of boys out," you know? And red tag goes on, but, you know, we scraped that red tag off, cleaned it up a little bit. You know, like I say, I got no problem. Finally got a fence out, whatever they want to do on that side of the fence, as long as it don't bother me or the people in the neighborhood. You know, but it seems like we have issues. The city's losing money. You got, you know... You know, it can't be pick and choose. Where are you going to play with it downtown? I mean, yes. When the progress first started downtown with the Burton Hotel, you know, had some guy putting signs on his truck. "How you doing? All right, have a good one." Bad idea. Bad idea. Public sidewalk.
Yep, go ahead. My name is David Needenthal. I live at 459 North Main Street. I haven't lived in Marine City that long, and I don't really have a big preference one way or the other on the Guy Center. I do have some thoughts on it, though. I've been going up to St. Clair recently, and they have a beautiful downtown waterfront. If the city already has control of that piece of property and other pieces of property they're in control, you've got waterfront property at the best price you can get, because you already own it, right? So I would just caution that to just not, because you need a lot of extra cash, just sell it, number one. Number two, if you do sell it, and I don't care, the only thing that I liked about it, it was closer for me to walk, to pay my tax bill than to come out here. But please be very careful that you read everything in that original contract giving that to the city, so that you don't end in some lawsuit where you're spending a lot of my money, being a taxpayer, on a lawsuit, instead of doing more things that the city doesn't really have enough funds to take care of currently. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Heather Warner, 345 North Elizabeth Street. I won't talk about the real estate, because you already know how all the people feel about that. But what I do have to say is that all of you up there on this end are either elected officials or voted-in officials. It's part of that job. That meant that there was two meetings a month. June 6th meeting canceled. 7/1 meeting canceled. 8/5 meeting canceled. Why are we canceling all these meetings? There's... We haven't had a meeting since July 15th. So from July 15th till now, over 30 days, the fire has been fueling over the real estate, when we could have had done something about it prior. We have a new city manager coming in. There's city business that has to be done. So I feel that if you can't have your two meetings a month like you're supposed to, maybe you guys shouldn't be sitting in those seats, and you should resign. My second thing is, at the 617 meeting, the electronic sign, "We're going to pay $4,255 to move it from DPW 300 feet down the road," which I kind of think is a waste of money. I can tell you right now, I don't know anything that that library sign says, because I'm driving. The one at the DPW, I can tell you everything that it says, because I read it while I'm pumping gas. So I think that's a waste of four grand, and that's all I got. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Stacy Desmond, 159 Robertson. Regarding Friends of City Hall, if I have to see the building go, I prefer it went to Friends of City Hall for the old City Hall building. If I have a choice between seeing it remain perhaps the same or torn down and who knows what put in, I'd rather it stay the same. I think it's a great asset to the city. The Guy Center, I don't like the sale of the Guy Center, the way it's been approached. I would like to know the board's intentions with the sale of the Guy Center, and perhaps a public hearing allowed for the city citizens, so that we can all make a decision on what we want to do with the Guy Center in the future. Personally, it's part of our riverfront. I think it's... Personally, it's part of our riverfront, I think it should stay that way, no matter what, whatever we decide to do with it in the future. As far as ADA compliance, maybe making a historic site out of the building would help us find funding to be able to do that, something to look into. I also wanted to discuss a little bit about the parking downtown. I've noticed that the side streets leading up to Water Street, a lot of the cars are being allowed to park in actual marked parking spots that are right up against the side streets and the crosswalks, and by law, they should be 20 feet away. So I was hoping to see some change made there, which also would make it much easier to pull out left or right from the side streets, if we abide by that 20-foot law. The main thing I'd like to see is some openness, not by the board, maybe communicating with the city a little bit more, so that we don't have maybe an incidence like we're seeing right now with the sale of these properties, and so many people being upset simply because there was no discussion of a future of what would happen after the sale. Maybe sharing a future with the people of the city might change their minds a little bit. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? No? Okay. I'd like to turn the meeting over to our attorney, he's going to talk a little bit about the Guy Center will, and just give some information.
How come we're not doing that at 9:00 A.? That's what we're supposed to be doing at 9:00 A.
You don't want to talk about it now while everyone's here, because people are leaving?
Well, you only have to do a couple of things, and you're going to get right to it, all this stuff is quick.
Can you speak up so I can hear you?
Yep, all right, we'll, we'll move on, we'll get to.
I didn't say anything yet.
I want to make sure that the majority of people stay here for this. So we're, we're done, right? No more public, public comments, we're going to move on. Okay, I need approval of the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the city commission meeting minutes of July 15th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion or changes?
Yes, I'm glad somebody brought the issue up. I, I'm going to ask, too, that because this issue is very important, and because I asked for a meeting last time to avoid all this, I'd like that information with our discussion on the Guy Center put in here, I'd like it more detail, because it's very important history, it's very important to the public, and it's very important that they understand and see what happened and transpired at that last meeting, so I'd like that particular section corrected.
What do you want in there? I mean, I've got like 10 pages of minutes here.
Yeah. Yeah, you got all sorts of detail there, but when we get to this part, it's all cut out. You got, you got a paragraph, not even a paragraph, it's two sentences, that's it. So I just like a little bit more detail on what I requested and the response that I got back from the board.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote, please, we have a, we have a motion and a support.
Yes.
Can we table these until that's corrected, so we can see what the correction is?
Sure.
You, right now, you have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, so you need to act on that before you do something different.
Okay, so we can approve the, the minutes as they stand?
Or you could deny the approval of the minutes and, and get them corrected, or added to as.
So right now, we have a motion and an approval to, or a motion and a second to approve the minutes as they currently are?
Correct.
Correct, okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
To approve the minutes.
I can't hear, I'm sorry, no.
Commissioner Ross.
No.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Motion, uh, no, motion fails.
Okay.
So we'll bring these minutes back to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the city commission special meeting minutes as of July 20th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, discussion changes. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to consent agenda, we've got the departmental activity reports, the Marine City Area Fire Authority report run, the retiree healthcare meeting minutes of January 26th, the pension board meeting minutes as of April 27th, the retiree healthcare minutes, April 27th, community and economic development minutes, June 23rd, planning commission meeting minutes of June 14th, planning commission minutes of July 12th. We have a special event, the Welcome Back Friday Night Light Battle of the Bands, which is happening this weekend, the special event, Marine City Festival Music in the Park for August, September, and October, and a business license, it's just a name change for TCF Bank. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And financial business, we have expenditures, including payroll, for $1,326,200, $1,326,295.04. Can I have a motion to approve expenditures? So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any questions about expenditures?
I have quite a few. Is there some reason that these got changed, so that a lot of detail was removed from here?
Which ones?
Addresses, like all the electrical, doesn't tell you where they're from. Here's one on page, oh, page is this, can't even see, page three, we're doing advanced auto parts, it says, we bought a 2014 John Deere battery for a 98 Chevy Suburban and 99 Chevy Suburban, I have no idea what that means.
I've seen that, too.
Then, page eight, you got all the addresses missing for the electric, and it's not so much just for us, if the community wants to see these bills, they need to know, they can't read these, there's numbers that are attached to a line item in the budget, well, people aren't going to know what those are, so we need to kind of give them a clue, that one. There's another one on page 12, it says, we did monthly checks on all vehicles, doesn't say what department or what vehicles. Another one on page 14, that one says DPW. We did employment consulting, is that for the new city manager, Paul Kitten Cooney?
No, that's for pension.
This is pension? Okay, nice, again, see, see what I'm getting at? I have no idea on all these, what, there's one here, we paid unemployment claims, who, this is on page, can't even see the page number, 18, just says unemployment claims, 310 bucks, no person. I hate to hit you with all this, but this one here was a mess. I'll keep going, page 21, there was one, Red Max trimmer, $939 for blade spool line oil repairs, is there more to that?
That was repair of the X mark lawnmower, plus the trimmer, plus repair of the trimmers.
So you see what I'm getting at?
I see what you're getting at.
There's another one here, there was another one in here, oh, this one here, page seven to 12, it says, equipment repairs weed whip, and then it says, equipment repairs, other repairs, land and building repairs, land and building repair, $192, I have no idea what we did with a weed whipper, unless we beat a building with it. So, and then there's one here, too, that we're just paying off border review from March. So anyway, yeah, there's some real problems with this, so I can't, I, I don't know what you want to do with it, but it's a mess.
All right. I'll check into this and see if we can get this tuned back up to where it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I brought up on Tracy, our building inspector, and I didn't see him payments form for a long time, and I see now he put a payment in for February.
I believe he likes to get paid quarterly, or every four or five weeks.
Well, I've had that in other units, and auditors don't like that. They want, he's a weekly employee, you're getting, you're putting his hours by the week, he should be getting a paycheck, just like everybody else that's an hourly employee.
I will check on that.
So, so the last invoice we got from him, to pay him, was, was in February for over $3,000. I just want to know when he's working, and I asked the prior city manager the same question. Thank you.
I see him here, he's, he has been working.
He's here Tuesday afternoon, Thursday morning, and he comes in Monday afternoons to do.
I, I don't see it, and it doesn't show in the, in the, in the financial report.
I see him here all the time. Okay. So what are we going to do with this, are we just going to table it?
We need to get these tracks cut, we have to.
No, you cannot, you have to, you can approve the expenditures and
With?
And get some of the detail back to Lisa.
Okay.
But I wouldn't recommend not passing the expenditures.
Okay, all right, so I need a motion to approve the expenditures, and obviously, we're going to get more detail from some of these line items.
We already have the motion, I believe.
Yeah.
A motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
No.
Mayor Verkaman.
No.
Commissioner Bryson.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yeah, you're going to have a problem, because you got to pay the bills. I mean, I know I'm complaining about it.
We just want, we want to approve this, but then just get more detail on it, because if we don't approve it, these bills don't get paid.
Okay, got it.
See, I mean, I don't like to do it any more than you do, but.
Well, obviously, I need some explanation, so.
Do you want to?
I'm changing.
So start your recall, start your.
So we're going to do, roll call vote again, please, now that we have more.
And does everybody understand that there's going to be more detail on the invoices, but
Got it.
all you're approving is the pay, you know, the, the payment of these invoices, which is part of your city business.
Okay, got it.
I thought the thing on the table was that it was to approve it as given. I mean, if, I just.
The amounts.
Okay.
The amounts, yes.
Okay.
And then.
As long as that's understood.
And then Mike will work on filling in the.
Understood, that's okay.
We're approving the expenditures.
Just wanted to make sure we work.
All right, Brian, sorry. Got you, I got you, Brian.
Approving the expenditures and cleaning, okay, got it, okay. So Chris, can we start that again?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
2021 Recreation Village Distribution, I just need a motion to accept and file.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? And roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to unfinished business, now we're going to have a discussion on remanding the property to a realtor for possible sale, and our city attorney's going to speak about this.
Going to speak loudly, so everyone can hear. I was asked to look into the Guy Center history, and I think that the history is important, not only for the voting commissioners, but for the public. The documents that I was able to uncover and review include the last will and testament of Bertha Guy from 1972, the actual minutes of the city commission dated September 20th of 1973, appraisal and notes for 109 North Elizabeth from 1973, appraisal and notes for 133 North Elizabeth from 1973, and a warranty deed for the Guy Center property from Detroit Edison to the city of Marine City in 1973. Those are the documents that I looked at to provide the commissioners with a memorandum dated July 20th, 2021, which is about nine pages long with multiple exhibits, and I think everybody has received a copy of that. So if you, if you start with the documents, and, and I look at things purely factual, I don't render an opinion on whether we should sell this property, I'm just giving you the facts and the history of, of the documents. And so you have a last will and testament, you have a controlling city, city of Marine City resolution, and the, the folks didn't leave you the Guy Center, they left you two parcels of property, so there was, there was two parcels of property left to Marine City. There's an appraisal of those properties subsequent to their, to the grant of the properties to you. So essentially, the folks left you two properties, you went out as a city and appraised them, and you got values, the appraisals were 15,000 and 22,000, and then you put them on the market, and you converted the gift given to you into money. And you sold 109 North Elizabeth for $24,000 even, and you sold 133 North Elizabeth for $18,025, so the combined value of the gift given to you was $42,025. So you weren't given the Guy Center, nobody left you the Guy Center, they left you two parcels that you converted to money. So now you're sitting with $42,025, and then you bought the Guy Center for $46,000, so you took.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, I was just on a roll there. Sure, sure.
Who did we buy the Guy Center from?
That's right where I was. So, so you bought the Guy Center from, directly from Detroit Edison, and you bought it for $46,000 on October 1st, October 4th of 1973, by a warranty deed. So just so we're all set on the facts, there's a, there's a binding last will and testament of, of what appears to be some very nice people in your city, they leave you two parcels, the parcels may not, I don't know the history, but maybe they weren't of good use. You appraised them, you sold them, you came up with $42,000, the Guy Center was available to purchase for 46, you took some money out of the general fund, you supplemented the 42, and you bought the Guy Center. Okay, so that's, that's where, that's where, that's the history. Okay. In your, in, in the, in the. In your, in, in the, in the, in the documents, you know, leaving you the money for this purpose, the, the resolution captures that. The resolution of the community ends up capturing that. And it, 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 it's expected that there would be some periods where there might be a sale, there might be a repurchase, there might be construction, there might be renovation that happens to whatever your community center ends up being. The main intent and, and the clarity is that, is that the funds will always be used for a community center. So for example, if this room was to become the community center, you have to look at what did this room cost? You have to balance it against the, the funds that could be established from the Guy Center. And if there's excess funds, then those funds need to be for community center purposes. I don't know if that's your intent. But it was, it was very clear that the City of Marine City made it clear in their resolution that in order to give effect to the last will and testament, that funds that derive from that process would always be used for a community center. The folks didn't tell you where you had to have the community center. The folks didn't tell you, you know, how to run the community center. They just wanted it forever to be the Guy Center Community Center. So, the, the language is actually the City of Marine City covenants to use the funds therefrom for a community building to always be designated the Guy Community Center. And the guy, the City of Marine City will designate the real estate so devised and conveyed as the Guy Center, the Guy Community Center, and will display a plaque forever in that regard. So, so the, 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 the nature of the gift to you was such that it envisioned that there could be sales, there could be downtimes, there could be renovations. I think they, the, the purpose was the longevity of a community center. They wanted a longevity of a community center. So in, in the conclusion that I gave to the, to the commissioners, I would just read it to you so that it's, you know, kind of encapsulates what we've talked about here, is that the City of Marine City resolved and covenanted that a Guy Community Center would be maintained at all times, except during those periods of time caused by a sale, a repurchase, construction, reconstruction, or renovation. As a result, to the extent that the City of Marine City should choose to sell the Guy Community Center property, the funds raised from that sale would have to be used in an appropriate amount for the purpose of a community center. And that community center shall and must have the relevant plaque. This means any current sale of the property as a whole would have to be analyzed to determine how much of the proceeds are actually attributed to the community center. Marine City was very clear in its resolution historically that it intended to be bound by the resolution, and the City of Marine City is, in my opinion, bound accordingly. The law supports this type of a gift, and the enforcement of the conditions asserted and accepted, which you did accept. Based on that, I would recommend that you look at the total price. If you're going to sell 303 Water Street, I'm not sure you are, but you need to take a look at what's the value of that attributed to the community center, and that those proceeds must be rolled into a new community center. For example, if you want to make your community center here, if it wants to be this room, you should take the balance of the money and you should improve this room to make it a legitimate community center, which could be a nice community center or somewhere else. But you have to use the funds in a manner of a community center. But I don't, I want everyone to understand, there's no indication in any documents that the Guy Center had to be the community center. That's just not true. That's not what the documents say. In fact, they didn't even leave you the Guy Center. You chose to buy the Guy Center with their money.
My understanding was that was the guy that owned that in Detroit Edison rented that from her.
That's, that's just factually, with all due respect, that's just factually not true. With all due respect.
There was a speculation too that it was never to be used for city offices. Where I got that, I don't know. But what about the clipping that was in the Heritage or something? I just saw that the other day about when they dedicated the Guy Center to the community? There was an article.
There's, there's absolutely no doubt that you took the two properties given to you by generous people. And that you sold them, you converted it to money, and you bought the Guy Center to be a community center.
You know, I'm Hubert, a doctor.
Well, I, I, you know what? With all due respect, I appreciate that. I'm just, like I said, I go from the deeds and the title work and the, and the covenants and the appraisals and the sale documents. Yeah, I'd be happy to share these with you if you want to take a look into them further. So, so that's, that's where, that's where you are. And I understa, you know, I, I don't think the actual sale of the Guy Center is on your agenda tonight. I think the agenda item is simply to have it looked at by a real estate agent to see what the market might be or what a sale price might be. I don't think, and I think the, the people here need to know, that there has no, there has not been a vote to sell the Guy Center.
Not at all.
And the only vote tonight was to engage a realtor to look at the possible sale and to look at the documents on the sale. And the same with, oh, she's gone. The same with old, old City Hall. There's, there's been no decision to sell City Hall, although we've had meetings talking to the City Hall, the Friends of City Hall, very productive meetings.
Yep.
And very cooperative meetings. So, anyone who wants to see these documents, I know one. Anyone else who would want to see the documents, I'd be happy to make this available. I did not mark this privileged and confidential for the sole reason that I thought the community might want to see this.
But you told us in email that it was privileged and confidential. That's why I'm asking you now.
Well, I, I, I'm telling you what I think. You have to vote to make it not confidential. I don't hold the privilege that, it's always, we know this. You guys hold the privilege. What I'm saying is, I don't have a problem. I, I don't see any. I don't see any, who said reason? I don't see any reason. I don't see any reason or any legal opinion embodying in here of a proprietary legal nature that I, I've reviewed this twice since we've been sitting here, that I would be uncomfortable letting the public see. There's no secret advice in here, you know, or, or any, or any secret messages from your lawyer. So I think it's all, this is a summary of public records.
Okay.
And, and if you want the public to see this, you hold the privilege with your lawyer. Vote to suspend the privilege on this document. Let the people have this and let the people review it. And let them see that it's pretty consistent with what I've presented.
Okay. Can I make that motion now? I want to say two things before we make a motion. First off, at our last meeting where we voted unanimously, this entire board voted unanimously to just get what's called a request for proposal from a realtor. We have three city assets that we have no clue what their value is. That was the only thing that we voted on. Three things. Three pieces of property. And we all voted unanimously, yes, let's look at getting a realtor. So we know what our assets are. We know the value of our assets. So, okay.
Can I make a slight suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
Before we go too far down the rabbit hole, I'd like to suggest that we discuss each property individually.
Yes.
And vote on them individually.
Agreed.
And so we're not talking cross purposes. And then, since we're already halfway on the Guy Center, I propose maybe we start with that. And then maybe, you know, as part of the initial discussions, the first thing would be to discuss and possibly vote on making the legal opinion or suspending the privilege for the legal opinion. So just, just my thoughts.
Thank you. All right. Okay, well, let's just do this now. Are you good?
Well, I want to go with a couple of things. Couple of things I haven't given you that I got from our prior attorney was a couple other opinions on the use of the building. I don't know if you're interested in those.
I have them. There, there was, there was a opinion from a prior attorney about, about using.
Corrigan Flanagan?
About using it as a library.
How about the one for the chamber?
Yes. And, and, and the, the opinion centered on whether a library or the chamber use was akin enough to a community center to continue to meet the spirit of the bequeath.
Yes.
From these generous people who wanted it to be a community center. And the lawyer, I didn't think it was relevant to the history necessarily.
But I, I, just so everybody's clear, I mean, I talked to George Ockham because he was our original attorney back then. And he, his firm handled all this. And he basically agrees with what you've come up with here. Not that it's, you know, not that it's necessarily a good thing, but I did talk to him. But the problem too was made that the commission, for all the years that the commission was in that building, they were advised that they were improperly in that building for all those time in violation of her will.
Let's to the opposite.
Yes.
I think the, I think the bequeath has some language in it that recognized there could be time periods.
Yes.
It uses the word time period.
But not 15 years.
I understand what you're saying. It says, there could be time periods where you, where you as a city are thinking, are thinking of renovation, or you're thinking about construction or transferring, that you know, that the use could be suspended. It does, it does contemplate that, but I understand what you're saying.
He advised him that it was okay to do, do it for an emergency use to first go in there, but not for the intent of that many years. And then after that, they were advised that they were in violation of her will, just so that that's clear. But he, he gave me the same documents that he's got. There was two houses, they sold them and bought the other. George, George agreed on the same thing.
Hey, she doesn't believe you either.
But I think it's just very important. So one other thing I want to get into about this building before we move into any other building. Talk about the property surrounding it and the footprint. You're just selling, if, if it went up for sale, you're just talking the footprint, correct? Of the building?
Footprint what, 303?
Guy Center.
Just the footprint. We have a lifetime easement on both sides.
Explain about the parks around it. I think that's another thing people need to understand.
There'll be a lifetime easement on both sides of the 303 South Water. So they'll be still city maintained, still city, the Civic Witness Club will still be there, everybody. The back of the building, they'll get like 25 feet roughly up to the anchor. And that's it. And then the rest of that retains the city still, the sidewalk, waterfront, everything back there. So basically, they're getting the building and 25 feet behind the building.
Why the 25 feet?
Well, because that's our city walkway back there. Do you want to put them all the way?
No, why are they getting the 25 feet right behind the building?
So if they want to put a deck or something, they have room.
There was an Edison easement through their power line, came into the back of the building.
Well, this is, this is one of the reasons that you were going to look at a realtor.
Right.
Figure out. The purpose I thought of, of tonight was to engage a real estate expert to figure out what is sellable.
Right.
To look at the agreement you currently have on Friends of City Hall, to look at these documents, figure out what is sellable, and report back to you what is sellable and what, what would be the value of the asset. You need to know the value of the assets regardless for your, for your city planning. But that's one of the questions, I think, of real estate.
Well.
Exactly what can be sold.
Yeah. One of the problems though is if you go through our charter, it says, if we own a park, we cannot sell a park unless we get a vote of the people. So that's what I'm getting to as far as the property.
I think it's only if the parks are in the master plan. I think it's, I, I agree, I think it's only parks that are in the master plan. And that's why you voted unanimously, I think, to remove those certain parks from the master plan so that you could go down the road of analyzing their sale. You did that a long time ago.
Well, the, well, no, it was just recently.
Well, I mean, not, not tonight, meetings ago.
Yeah. But the thing is, is I think most people figured it was going to be the footprints of the building, not all the property.
We don't, I, I can tell you what I've looked at. Whoever buys that is buying wall to wall, wall to wall, nothing else. You will still have easements and control of all the land.
That's, that's.
But I don't know that, I'm not the real estate expert.
All right. And, and that's why I'm asking this, because if you don't talk about this now, then that goes out and it festers again about the property. Understand?
But we need, we need an expert real estate person to, to tell you these answers.
Wouldn't that be on file for description when they bought it from the Edison? Supposedly?
Could be.
So we're going to, we're going to do three motions, correct?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you guys. On this one though, I would appreciate, since we're so in depth on this memo, that the privilege get waived sooner than later.
Do that first.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. Go ahead. You want to, you want to make the motion?
Yeah. So what's the wording that you want me, what's the word you want me to use?
I move that we, I move that we release the attorney-client privilege with respect to the July 20th, 2021 memo.
I'll make the motion that we released. I'm just going to say to the public, the July 20th, 2021 Guy Center property attorney information.
No, you have to release the privilege.
Release the privilege.
Yeah, thank you.
Support.
We have a motion of support.
I said what Lisa said.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So that took care of Guy Center.
Okay, who wants it?
Guy Center privilege released for this document doesn't take care of.
Okay. So then we need another motion now for if we want to remand the Guy Center to a realtor.
For analysis.
For analysis and possible sale.
Okay.
Would the board like that to be posted on the website, that, that attorney opinion? What would be the SSW for the public?
Yeah, probably.
I'd put it on the web, put it on the website.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that require a vote?
No.
You want to make that motion?
I will.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion that we remand the Guy Center to a future identified realtor for analysis of a, and possible property sale.
To be, to be brought back to this commission.
To be brought back to the commission.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Can I ask you second to that?
It was Bill.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, at any time after we get, or you get, whatever you're going to get, are you still going to involve the public in any decision that's made? Because they're the ones that have all, I mean, it is their billing. It's, it's been a community center. I've been around it a long time. I remember we had to pay for the retirees that used to play cards there. We've been paying for their other billing because they got kicked out of there. That billing has been used for a long time. And I asked for it last time, and I'm going to ask again that, that we have meetings on this and we involve the public before anything is done.
I agree.
I agree.
Agreed.
We used to have hot dogs after the parade.
Okay, and so what do we need to do there?
Do we need a motion to form a committee or anything?
No, I think, I think what you do is you, you, you get your report, and then you as a group decide, well, let's, let's hold a public hearing, let's, whatever.[1799.15]
Right. So, you're making a motion to get, to have a public hearing, because you didn't the last time. So, are you doing it this time?
You can't do anything until you get the report.
Yeah, you have to wait.
I'd wait till you get a report back from the realtor.
The report could end the whole analysis. I mean, you may not do anything with the property once you get the report. I don't know.
Got it. Okay.
This is mayor. Normally, I don't chime in like this. Other people have, so I'm just going to. We're talking about a public hearing, possibly in the future. I think that's a great idea. Could we also look at the possibility of like a town hall forum? So, if you guys discuss things, we can chime in at the same time, and we're not limited to.
Like a question and answer.
Yes. A town hall forum, even better than a public hearing.
Yeah, sure.
Just throwing it out there.
Yep, yep.
We're not limited to five minutes.
Yes, exactly. We can say our piece and be asked in the conversation on both buildings, City Hall and the Guy Center.
Good thought, Phil.
Yep.
A script discussion.
Okay, so that, that's your one building.
Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to 300 Broadway.
300 Broadway, you're currently in a lease arra, did you want me to speak? You're currently in a lease arrangement with the Friends of City Hall, and that lease arrangement has been going very well. The lease arrangement has a right of first refusal clause in it. The realtor will want to look at that lease because a right of first refusal certainly has an impact on the value of property if it's subject to a right of first refusal. So, the Friends of City Hall have reserved the right of a first refusal, and that should, that has to be honored. Nothing prevents you from, you know, disposing of that property to the Friends of City Hall in some other manner. But, if you do put it on the market and somebody comes along and says, "I'd like to buy that building for X," the Friends of City Hall have the right to buy it for X first.
Okay. So, now, we're gonna do 300 Broadway. So, we gotta do the same thing as far as a realtor?
Yeah. And I think, I think you want an analysis on Broadway from a realtor, showing them the right of first refusal, showing them the other title documents, and letting them come back to an analysis on whether it's sellable and what's the asset worth.
Right, exactly. Exactly. Okay. Motion?
You want a motion, or do you want to discuss it further?
Well, we're gonna.
My personal opinion, it's just me, is I am dead-set against sending this building to a realtor because I'm dead-set against selling this building with one exception, and that is if it were to be sold to the Friends of City Hall, if they requested it, and if it was sold at a price that did not impact their ability to continuously upgrade it. I don't want to drain their bank account in order to have them buy this thing. And regardless of if we sell it to them or not, you don't need a realtor involved to do that. So, that is my big heartburn with sending that building to a realtor is you send it to them, but you're basically wasting their time, at least from my personal opinion, because I would never vote to put it on the open market.
Right.
But, originally, we all voted to have the real, to look at all three properties so we know the value. That's all we want. We're not selling the building. We just want to know what the value is.
That's what we all, that's what we all voted yes for.
Yep.
My personal opinion is unless the sell price is like a dollar, my vote is no.
And you have that, you have that right.
But, that's just me. That's my opinion only.
Thank you. Mike?
Okay. We've been talking with the Friends of City Hall, and it's been going very, very well. And I'm hoping, maybe it's September 2nd meeting, I have something to you, to present to you. Okay? I think we, I think we came up with something that's beneficial to all parties, and we just need a little more time to knock it out, a little bit more. But, we have, we have been working with them, and it's been very good so far.
So, can we table the?
I would just, I would just keep the 303 and the 823 Brew Street on there and table this one for now. And we come back with the proposal with 300 Broadway. We don't like it. We still have the realtor that you can have it done then.
My only concern is, I know when Judy talked about this, that there were meetings going on. I don't know who directed anybody to do this, because one thing you have to be careful of is our charter, and we all have to be equally informed. And the only way people can make deals and whatever is the board has to direct it.
I'm not making deals. We're not making deals. Everything we're talking about comes to your commission. You guys can decide on it. I can't decide.
Well, more people are involved than us. I have no idea what you're talking about. That's the only thing that I don't like.
Well, go behind, nobody's back.
No. Nobody's going behind your back.
Well, obviously, some people know about it, and the rest of us don't. So, I'm not saying you're going behind their back, but.
Well, Lisa, you, Lisa, you understand that if you met, if you all met with people that you would have a quorum, and that would be a public meeting, and it would be a closed session anyways, because you're allowed to be on solid footing with.
Normally, the board directs somebody to go do.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
An item like this. See what I'm saying? We decide to direct so-and-so to go and discuss with this board and come up with the deal. But, that's not, none of that's happening. That's part of the charter. So, I'm just saying, be careful with that. But, I agree with you about, I wouldn't waste my time on a real estate agent myself, give it to the Friends of City Hall, and be done with it, and let them have at it, and they can finish the building.
Would it make sense, Lisa, to make a motion to approve Mike's discussions with it? Set up a board, as you mentioned earlier, or?
I don't know what they've been discussing, so I don't know what to approve.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, why don't we table 300 Broadway, and let's talk about 823 Brew Street, because that's a parcel of land that's vacant, right? There was a house on it, got torn down, and obviously, we need to get a realtor to.
Take a look at that.
Give us a price.
Provide evaluation, yeah.
So, can I have a motion to get the realtor to, or get a realtor to give us a price on 823 Brew Street?
Like to make a motion to get a realtor to be determined, or several, to make a proposal on evaluation of the Brew Street property.
Support. We have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to, where are we?
Did you, did you, did you do a motion to table?
Yeah, do we need a motion to do that? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table.
Ladies and gentlemen, can we have some quiet, please? Thank you. 300 Broadway.
Make a motion to table discussion of procuring a realtor to evaluate the property at 300 South Broadway.
Until when?
At least next meeting. Yes, next meeting.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we are at 9C.
B.
B. Request for Proposals of Commercial and Residential Real Estate Services. Mike?
We put the SERFP out, and unfortunately, we only got one response back, and that'd be from Bachelor's Realtor here in town. So, we can either go with Bachelor's, or if you want me to do broader search and get other people in here, your decision.
I think, I mean, Bachelor's a local guy. For him to give us a price on these two properties, I'm fine with that. Anybody else?
Was it reported the realtors sought, real estate companies sought? How many did we go to? How many did we ask if they would be?
We put it out on our webpage. We sent everybody emails. We sent it out.
Okay.
It's out there.
Okay.
I can tell you, some didn't want to participate due to the volatility of the situation.
All right. I need a motion to choose a realtor, which is obviously Bachelor, because he's the only one.
I'll make a motion. We approve utilizing JA Bachelor as a realtor for our upcoming property analysis and possible sale.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Can we have a quick discussion? The only thing I'm concerned about, I don't have a problem with Brew Street, but I don't like lumping in the Guy Center with this, so that's, that's it.
Anyone else?
Can we, can we pull it out?
You could do them separate.
Just get Mike to, how's this gonna do this?
Yeah, okay. Let it go. Yeah, let it go.
We all voted yes on that earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, and do we have support? Did we get a support?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion of support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Bits for 2021 water main and road improvement project. Mike?
Yes. So, we went out for bids to put the new water main down Union Street, and repave Union Street from water to Bell River. And, the new water main down South Main, and repave the road from Union Street to the bridge. And, we got a price of, I believe it was five. Yep. Yep. That was, Murray Underground was the lowest bidder, and they've done work for us before, and they've been really, really good people to work with. But, we got this for a really good price. We're, our estimates were a lot higher than this, and came in where we can afford to do this. So.
My apologies, just for Murray bid 598-173. The engineer's estimate was the 626-733.
Right.
Just for anyone's edification.
So, I'm just recommending, we go ahead and use Murray Underground to replace the water mains on Union Street and part of South Main, and repave our Union Street and part of South Main.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve Murray Underground at 598-173 for Union Street and South Main Water Replacement Project.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Resolution Number 017-2021, the appointment of the city manager and approve the contract. Bob?
So, you had a committee working on this, and I gave them the framework of a contract. They worked with the contract and with the proposed new city manager, and the contract made its way into a final format, which is before you this evening, as well as a resolution to appoint the new city manager. Does anybody on the committee have any input?
I just had a question procedurally. Can we approve both of these, the resolution and the contract, or do you want two separate motions?
There'd be two motions.
Okay. I think they all received the changes and accepted them. The subcommittee did. They were very minor.
So, we need the first motion. We need to receive and accept the.
Well, I think, I think the first motion would be the resolution to appoint the city manager, and then you need a second motion to approve and execute the contract.
Okay. All right. I need a resolution to appoint.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 017-2021.
Support.
The appointment of Holly J. Catton, city manager. Support.
We have a motion of support. Now, questions, comments, concerns?
So, are all the other background checks, everything done yet?
Yes.
Everything's good? Okay. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we need, now, we need a motion to appoint her, correct?
Approve the contract.
No, I think the motion would be to approve and allow execution of the at-will employment agreement.
All right. Approve and allow the at-will employment agreement. All right, got it. Just making that motion.
I make a motion. We approve and allow the at-will employment agreement between the City of Marine City and Holly J. Catton.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We have a new city manager. New business, CED Board Digital Billboard Advertising Request. Do you want to talk about that, or? Yeah, go ahead. You can.
In July, the Chamber ran an event, well, it was actually canceled because of weather. It was the summer, summer cash splash, or summer splash, bash is what the event was. In conjunction, we also ran the Splash Cash Raffle Fundraiser. This fundraiser was, earned money for the Chamber and also for our Community and Economic Development Board, which I am chair of. We were able to raise $7,731.11 for each one of our organizations, or our board and our Chamber Board. So, I am requesting, as a Community and Economic Development Board, we are, our purpose is to help with community and economic development. And one of the things that our last meeting, July 28th, we did vote to bring to the board the possibility of having a billboard on I-94 and M-59, which would advertise Marine City. So, I believe in your packet should be a picture of what it looks like. It would be a shared venture, so the Chamber would pay for half, and we're asking the Community and Economic Development Board to pay for half. It would be for August, September, well, September, October, November, December. I requested up to $1,200, but after I received the proposal from the billboard company, he did give us a discount, and so it will actually be less than that. Right now, the funds are being held by McBride and Manley until Meghan comes back, and then the funds will be, a check will be issued and earmarked for our board.
Did you say you had a picture? Because we didn't get any pictures.
Oh, oh. Sorry. I thought it was in there. They might have forgotten it, but.
That is one.
So, it's a, it's a crater sunset or sunrise?
It's one of our sunrises. I think it was taken by Dwayne Upton. Just take me to the river, shop, dine, explore, and stay Marine City. So, very simple.
Yeah, the Marine City really shows up. That's good.
It may change for December, just because we have an event in town that we might change it to be like War Maritime Christmas Eve, but it'll basically just be a general. It may change for December, just because we have an event in town that we might change it to be like War Maritime Christmas Eve, but it'll basically just be a general.
Yeah, that's nice. That puts Marine City on the map. So you need a not to exceed, right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Laura? All right, we need a motion then to approve the digital billboard for the Community Economic Development Board or funds from the Community Economic Development Board. Not to exceed twelve hundred dollars for a digital billboard.
Question, can I vote on this because I'm a member of the chamber?
Yes.
I am a chamber, okay. All right, just want to make sure. Do anything wrong?
Okay, so I need a motion.
Like to make a motion to utilize in part of the funds raised by the Community and Economic Development Board with the Marine City Chamber of Commerce for use in this billboard, not to exceed twelve hundred dollars.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we have, you might as well stay there. We have the Community Economic Development Board golf sponsor request.
At our July twenty-eighth meeting of the Community and Economic Development Board, we discussed ways that we can use some of these funds to support community events. And one of the items that was brought to our board and then we are bringing to you today is to ask that you approve us to sponsor one of the upcoming events, which is two hundred dollars to support our fifth annual golf party, which is on September seventeenth. As a sponsor, the Community Economic Development Board and the City of Marine City will have information out there and will have actually like a banner and our logo will be on there. So it just shows, it's a way of us, for us to show that we are supporting community events. We hope to do more too in the future as well.
Any questions for Laura about the golf outing?
I'm just a little concerned on this one because, I just have concerns on this one. I think this one's gonna... We have to be careful in what we're doing it for because then you're going to have everybody asking on this and especially when it's the chamber and a lot of people are going to ask me, how come the chamber doesn't have two hundred dollars to do this?
Well, the chamber is running the event, so they have money invested in the event. There are other events that will be forthcoming that do not belong to the chamber that we would like to support. So if there is something coming up, like the Lions Club is having an event or Rotary or whatever, we would like to use some of these funds, you know, within reason to help support some of these events, to show that we are supporting our community events.
I don't think two hundred is a big ask. Okay, anybody else? I need a motion to approve the two hundred dollar expenditure to help with the, to sponsor the fifth annual golf outing.
I make a motion to approve the expenditures of the two hundred dollars to support the Marine City Area Chamber of Commerce Golf Party.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to the repeal of seven zero dash zero five seven, the snow removal ordinance, two thousand eighteen dash zero one. Mike, you want to explain this? I mean, we just talked about it already, but...
Yeah, we talked about this last commission meeting. The repeal of the parking ordinance around town to get the way with the two AM to six AM parking. Because it's been very good for the last couple of years that people have been getting out of the way. And we've come to you and asked you to repeal it for this every winter. So I'm just asking to repeal this, be done with it. I don't have to come back every year to you guys, but I want to make note that South Water and part of Broadway will still remain no parking from three AM to six AM for snow removal. So that's not endless. This is just for the rest of the streets in town. This does not include South Water.
Do you have something elsewhere for those two?
Yeah, those are under...
Covered under something else?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? We talked about this already, but any more questions? All right, I need a motion to approve the introduction of repealing this ordinance, two zero one eight dash zero one.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion in support. Everybody good? We talked about this already.
I didn't even get the ordinance.
Should it include the section in there because we're just repealing that section, correct?
Yeah, you know, we talked about this procedurally. When you're repealing an ordinance, you treat it as if you're adopting an ordinance. It's an ordinance change, so please cite in the motion to the provision.
I will amend my motion to repeal section seventy point zero five seven of ordinance number two zero one eight dash zero one.
Well done, Jacob.
There you go.
Same second?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have a proposal for new meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-two. This is in an effort to tighten things up a little bit as far as our meeting schedule and hopefully, it's like our office staff is constantly doing agenda packets. So it frees up a little more time with them. Mike, you want to talk about this too?
Yeah, what we did was every day of the week, we have a meeting, every day. Some of the people are here twelve, fourteen hours a day. This will free up everybody. One day a week meetings, everybody will fit in here. We'll hold the second one, if necessary, the second meeting of the month, if necessary. But the way this works out, we have, we can meet on Wednesdays and still have our meetings. The rest of the nights are free. This will not take effect until December. Because otherwise, if we do it now, we'd have to cancel every meeting, make special meetings for everything, that's just too much, so.
Do you thoughts and recommendations?
Well, I work for other communities and I can't make these meetings on Wednesday.
I got the same problem. My fire authority meeting is the same night as the commission meeting. I can't move that because of the other townships. So that's my only problem with them. And I'm kind of wondering, did we ask some of the people on the boards? Because I know on some of these boards, we have people that can only come certain days. And I also, I mean, we have a lot of, it's hard enough to get people on these boards. I don't want to lose any because we shift it all to a Wednesday and then they can't attend. So I'm kind of wondering, did we put any feelers out to the rest of the boards to find out their feelings on this?
Well, we can do that too.
Maybe get a good day for all of you and then we can check with them.
Yeah, this is just a start.
Yeah, this, yeah.
Where is it helping you with the staff?
What's that?
You said you changed it because of the staff.
Well, just every night there's a meeting. So we're here, you may have one meeting one week, but we have a meeting every night. And then we have to do all those agenda packets and all the minute meetings, everything else within the next couple of days.
Like a full-time job.
Well, you got four boards that only meet four times a year, though.
Right.
So that only, and you don't have to worry about the fire authority. So that gives you one, two, dangerous building board meets once in a while. So that gives you one, two, three, three that are meeting all the time. I mean, the rest of them are quarterly and fire authority takes care of itself. So.
And I'm on two of those committees, so.
Why don't we, can we just table this until next month and then?
Sure.
We'll look at it again and...
Is there a day that would work for everyone?
Well, I think you ought to talk to the other boards. And I think maybe this is something our new city manager should kind of take a look at and let her look at this when she's coming in here. So I would table this until our new city manager can, and pull the rest of these boards too to find out how they feel.
She may be here.
Maybe not.
Second that. That was a motion, right, Lisa?
So we have a motion and a second? Did we get a second?
Bill's support.
Oh, all right. So then we're...
Did you not bill?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Just give me one second. Commissioner Kreidler.
I'm sorry, this one I didn't hear. Could you repeat the motion that's...
This is a motion to table the proposed new meeting schedule discussion.
Ten D.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're going to talk about the campfire ordinance. Our very patient Fire Chief Joe Spanxter is going to speak on it. Wake up, it's time for you to talk.
Good evening. So I bring this forward to you guys to look at and maybe consider. In the ordinance right now, we don't allow city burning in the city unless it's a cooking style fire. And I'm in a proposal, I'm proposing, proposing to allow campfires, but they have to be within a thirty-inch ring or a purchased campfire site needs to be approximately at least fifteen feet away from any structure, fifteen feet away from any property line. Not to have them on any balconies or covered patios. And it's all written down here. We get probably four or five, maybe six calls a month in the city for illegal burns. And it always seems to end up as being a neighbor dispute. This guy's kids were on my lawn, so I'm going to call for this fire that he's having because he knows that it's not a legal burn or not a legal thing to do. So I would ask the board to maybe look this over. I don't know if you're going to make a decision tonight. It's totally up to you guys. But it gives the residents, I know we go to a lot of them and you go there and there's a parent with five, six, seven-year-old kids and I hate to put them out. I just, a lot of times I ask them not to add any more to it. And when we do get the complaints, a lot of it is a neighbor dispute. It's nothing to do with the smoke. The only thing I ask is that they do not burn leaves or building material, pallets. It has to be seasoned wood and there has to be a way to extinguish it, either garden hose or fire extinguisher within reach of the responsible person at that campsite.
So do you want this formally brought back, chief, as an introduction to an ordinance?
Yes. This is pretty much exactly the same ordinance from the City of Elginak. I have spoken with their chief and their call volume has gone down a little bit because they go and they see that it's a legal. The only thing I ask is if residents are going to burn, they contact the fire department and let us know. I can either come out and check it prior to lighting it or, and it's not count as a run for the city.
That's good.
So it's got to be, it's got to be in a ring.
Got to be in a thirty, thirty-inch ring or one of them elevated, nice fire pits with a screen top on it or a round. But no more, no bigger than thirty inches in diameter, fifteen feet away from any structure, fifteen feet away from your neighbor's property line.
What about extinguishing that fire before you go in the house?
Yes, and that is spelled out in there too, in the ordinance that it should be wet prior to responsible person going in after. And there is also a time limit on them. I believe six PM until ten PM at night. We allow that open campfires.
Six to ten?
Yep.
In here, it's four to ten.
I'm sorry, four to ten.
Okay. Any questions for chief? All right, so basically we're just doing it, it's an intro turned ordinance, right?
So... I think you moved to bring it formally back on the agenda as a first introduction reading as a new ordinance.
Okay.
That was a good introduction, chief.
Thank you.
So we don't need a motion or anything, that's just going to...
No, motion, motion to bring it back next meeting as an introduction to a new ordinance.
I'll make a motion to bring this back next meeting as an introduction to a new ordinance.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And city managers report.
All right, so the month of July, attended the Community and Economic Development Board meeting, the Pension Board Retirement Board meeting, TIFA Board meeting. Met with the city manager search subcommittee, interviewed the coming clerks. Worked with the city attorney on pension issues. Worked on the contract for new city manager, worked with Fire Chief for the campfire ordinance. Met with the New Saint Clair County Parks Director Nancy Windsor. Coordinated the move to two sixty South Park with Comcast, High Tech and Premier. Moved city hall, went up and running one day. Worked with the building department, issues around town and my daily duties as a city manager and my daily duties as DPW superintendent.
That's all?
Interim manager.
The outstanding items. We did adopt International Building Code back in three eighteen of two thousand and four. So that is adopted.
But they're updated every three years and...
When you adopted it, you adopted all subsequent amendments.
They usually bring those back to us every year with the new ones.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
And we've never done them, is all I'm saying. So it's been updated every year since two thousand and four and we've never updated the approved ones. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So there was a two thousand and eighteen and now there's a two thousand and twenty-one version. So two thousand and eighteen was the last new version.
Okay. Also, on my to-do list was the St. Clair County Emergency Management Plan. We've already adopted that. That was adopted September fifth of two thousand and nineteen.
But I don't think she ever gave us a copy of it. Because I think I asked for it and she said...
Want me to email it out to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll email it to the board.
Okay.
Because then we were supposed to work on it. She was claiming we were going to work on our own, so I don't know what she was doing.
We don't need to work on our own. We fall underneath theirs.
Yeah, well, she never gave us a copy of it as far as I know.
And St. Clair County is updating their emergency response plan again. So hopefully, what, two years, Jim?
I have no idea. When I called and asked him to send what they currently had on file, he sent it to me in thirty seconds, which I subsequently then just ordered to Mike to do some research and found out that this was already done in September nineteen or eighteen or whatever.
Yeah.
But I don't know what they're updating or... He never said that to me.
Okay. The only other questions I got, we didn't have any financial reports for this month? Not the bills that we always...
They didn't guide anything to me.
The financial statements, I should say.
Nope.
So we didn't do that this month. Is the pension request that came up at the pension board meeting for this board to review for another attorney, is that going to come back?
It's coming up September first, the September second meeting.
Okay. I know the fifteen-minute parking spot up top... I know the fifteen-minute parking spot uptown, is that going to be changed to green? I know.
Yes.
Okay. And I guess a question to you while I'm talking about this. Since the boat sold and it's going to be closed on in a week, what happens to our contract?
We have to look at that lease. We have a lease agreement. We'll have to do a formal termination of the lease agreement. I'll, I'll call Paul directly on that and then we'll have to have that on the next agenda to term, for you to vote to terminate the lease.
Any other questions for city manager?
Yeah, the boat, somebody brought it up to my attention that they thought there was oil slipped down by them. Have you noticed anything down there?
How long ago?
Um, just today, I got a report. It's been leaking on and off and I know I've had several reports on it. I haven't been able to see it, but I know somebody told me they saw it this morning again.
Where at?
His boats.
Okay. That was down there this morning, I didn't see anything.
I was trying to get one, one lady told me she had pictures. I tried to get her to send them to me, but I hadn't gotten them yet. But somebody else said they walked by there this morning and saw a big slick under the bridge coming out from the boat.
There's a lot of slicks on Bell River, though, I'm just telling you. Because I've, I've been on and off that boat a lot. And I have, I haven't noticed anything, but. Okay.
Discussions with him, are you going to, because it sounded like he was intending on keeping the smaller boat there, so.
He, he, yeah, I'll have to, he seemed a little ambivalent on that on whether he, he has a six-pack license for that-
Right.
With the Coast Guard. So I don't know what his intent is on that. But that is part of the lease as well.
Sure, exactly.
Right.
Whole thing was a package deal, so. Amend the lease, just, yeah.
Or terminate the lease.
Right.
Any other questions for Mike?
Kayak launch?
September, I'm hoping. Got to email off to Eagle. Our, our permit's still in process.
Yeah, the DNR is very slow.
Unless they want something.
Yeah, oh yeah, believe me, they want something. But I talked to Jim Bowden and we're hoping to have it in in September. Because I had the same problem everybody else, material shortage, everything else, so.
But it's not physically in our hands yet, that's-
No, you'll, you'll see it when it's physically in our hands, because it'll be in.
It's not going anywhere else but in.
They'll at least get a couple of weeks out or something for the first year.
You could kayak all the way, you could kayak until it freezes over. All right, let's do, are we good, Mike?
I'm good.
All right, let's get on to Commissioner Privilege. Commissioner Bryson.
I have a couple of things, I know, shocker. First, after, after our new city manager gets in, gets their feet wet, maybe, you know, maybe in October, I think maybe we as a board should sit down with the community and economic development board and give them, you know, discuss what are the real aims, goals, maybe a direction, if you will, as opposed to just kind of letting them kind of float out there and trying to figure out, well, maybe we do this, maybe we do that. I mean, I personally can think of several things I would love to have them look at and focus on, but I think that needs to be a discussion for all of us. But, you know, maybe in October sometime after our new city manager gets their feet wet a little bit and gets a chance to meet everyone and. So that's the first one. And the second is, I'd just like to say how excited I am at the progress that we've been making over the past few years with the, our new city hall building with, forgive me, especially the infrastructure and roadway upgrades that we've been having. And that's always been one of my big pet things. And to see every year, we're fixing a road or replacing outdated water pipes. I mean, that, that's a huge thing for me and I think we're, our city is in a, is moving forward in a good place and I'm extremely excited about it. So that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendricks?
Couple of things. One thing too, when our new city manager comes in, we're going to have to deal with that goal issue and change that whole thing because one left and now we have a new one. So we got to think about that. This Sunday, August twenty-second, from one to five PM, the Marine City area fire authority is going to have an open house down here at the fire department. The police department's going to be there, TriHospital EMS is going to be there. Clay's bringing a smoke trailer. They're going to have hot dogs and stuff for the kids. So this is for the fire authority. You got East China, China, Cotterville, and Marine City, it's all encompassed in there. So Joe's got everything set up, he's all ready for everybody. He's got a new floor in there for everybody to see, a lot of good stuff that's been updated in the hall. So try to come out and support the fire department, that's from one to five on Sunday. The other thing is, is I want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight and voicing their opinion one way or another on the buildings. I think it's very important, I hope in the future, that this can be avoided and that from now on, we have town halls or any type of meeting to include the people in these discussions and the decisions instead of just trying to make it without getting people's feelings. I mean, I know, I've been here a long time and I know how dear that building is to the people, the Guy Center and three hundred Broadway. And there's been issues with three hundred Broadway because we've had votes on that before. But one way or another, it's still up to the community and even whether members of this board agree or disagree with the public, we have an obligation to support what the public wants. And if the majority of the public wants us not to sell, then that's what the board should do. I mean, it's pretty simple. So I'm just glad and I want everybody to keep up on it. I don't want you to forget about it, but, and I'll keep making sure that people know that we're going to do it. But please keep coming out to the meeting sometimes, especially if it's something that really means something to you. We need to hear from you. So I really, really appreciate everybody that came out tonight. And that's it.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes, well, I just want to, I too, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. You know, I, I know this, the subject was very, very volatile, very touchy and everybody had, you know, some very strong opinions and feelings about it. And I'm going to like ditto everything that Commissioner Hendrick said because I was writing it here and thinking the same thing. But what I, another thing I do want to say is that not that, don't wait till something, and I know this past year's been weird with our meetings and so we haven't been able to have open meetings and that kind of thing. But we all have email addresses. I think we're all pretty approachable. You know, don't, don't hesitate to email us if something's going, you're thinking about something, so, so that we know that there's a problem. And I'm not just saying this, this is, this, what we did tonight was huge, okay? And I, and I do think that we made some pretty good headway tonight. But don't wait, don't wait until it's, it's a boiling point, okay? Come to us, let us know that there's a problem because we can't fix it if we don't know it's broken. I too agree that we have to listen to the people, we have to do what you're asking us to do. Folks, you know, I'm going to age myself a little bit here. Moved out here when I was seven years old, that was fifty-five years ago. So I remember going into Edison with my mom and doing the light bulbs and everything else. I remember the diving boards and all of that. I remember when it got turned into the Guy Center and that kind of thing. So, yeah, so I left, but my family didn't, so I was still back here and I saw the changes in this town. So I'm passionate about it too, you know? So I'm here and I think all of us are here to listen to you. You know, it's not like we're just saying, yep, we're selling something that they love because that is not what we're going to do. I can promise you that, that is not what we're going to do, not without your input. So, thank you and hope to see you back because I got to tell you, I loved listening to our pledge of allegiance at the start of that.
Me too.
With all of us here, that was nice.
Thank you. Commissioner Clausen.
Kind of the same thing, thanks for everybody coming and let's keep working together.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it as well, hi everyone. And I'm, I'm grateful that you're allowing me to support and, and work with the city even remotely. And hopefully, we can get these meetings lined up with all of our schedules a little better. But I really appreciate your passion and I hear it and I'll keep it in mind in my decisions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yeah. By virtue of the order of the alphabet, I'm going, you know, towards the end here, but yes, echo everyone's sentiment and had this written down from near the beginning of the meeting, that it really makes me feel good that we have such an impassioned community and that they're willing to come out and express their opinions. Like the others have said as well, Phil Alexiak posted all of our cards right on the, and they're all available at city hall or what you prefer to call city hall, this building, either way. We're all, agree with Commissioner Callahan, we're all approachable. I don't think that there's anybody here that has, you know, an ill will in their body. And, you know, we are here to help you, we were voted in by you and please reach out to us for anything. So, thank you for that and, yeah, it's an honor to serve.
Thank you. I, I also just want to say that, you know, all of our business cards are sitting up at that counter. They were at the Guy Center at the counter. We all have emails, there's no, you know, secret, secret sauce, secret phone number, all that kind of stuff. We are all here and we all work very hard behind the scenes. And I think that maybe during Commissioner Privilege, we need to all talk about some of the work that we do because I know I make a phone call or I see somebody almost on a daily basis. One of the things, though, that I want to talk about is some of the comments made on social media. I am appalled at some of the comments that are made on social media. My suggestion, if you see something that you don't like, just keep scrolling. We don't have to always make our little comments because it just keeps going and going and going. Today, we were given some poll, you know, we shouldn't even look at stuff like that. That's social media, we don't, we don't have any verification, who voted, where it came from. That is like, I, I don't even know. That's, that's something that we shouldn't even truly look at. If the, my suggestion, like I said, is to keep, you know, scrolling if the conversation becomes ugly. One of the things that if somebody comments inappropriately on your post, delete your post, just get rid of it. Social media is not a credible source and is filled with misinformation and inaccuracies. There is absolutely no validation to ver, to verify that the person posting or responding is who they say they are. They might not even live in this area, they might not be a resident. And posting the personal will of the Guy family, in my opinion, on social media was wrong and tasteless. It's a matter of public record, I do know that, but if anybody wanted a copy, just come to the Guy, just come here. Just come here and ask for that. But to put it on social media, I thought it was wrong. Recently, we had two wonderful businesses close, close in Marine City that cited their closing because of the financial struggles due to the pandemic. All of us business owners have recently suffered financial hardships. It was suggested by someone that somebody protest a business, one of our businesses, because they didn't like what we were saying about the Guy Center. To protest one of our businesses after what we've been through in the last year and a half was tasteless and inexcusable. All of our city commissioners are available by city email, like we all said. We all work very hard. This is such a great turnout tonight. Keep that passion going by stepping up and volunteering your time like we do. Don't be a part of the problem, be a part of the solution. I thank everyone for attending. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.